John Brown. John Brown. You got a new round for a better tour walk again?
Uh, I think so.
Yeah. I haven't put the... It's been pretty bad yet. So let's see what we can do. Other new changes.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome all to regularly scheduled meeting at the Town Montgomery Planning Board for Monday, November 25th, 2019. There are agendas on this front table for anyone who'd like to follow along. Also, the notice for the Autumn Sky Development public hearings. Anybody like to read that? As we always do, we have some time set aside for a comment session with the decisions we need to look at tonight. I'll... We'll allot 20 minutes for this. And I know there's some people that are interested in Blue Water, so the public hearing was closed on the 24th of September. I know there's some people that would like... That have so few things they'd like to say, so I'll open up the floor for a short period of time for anyone who'd like to make a comment on anything not on the agenda or on Blue Water, on Project Sailfish. Is there anybody you'd like to... Yes, John. Hi.
John Brown, Coltonham, downstream from Lular. I submitted a letter today, and I'm sorry for the late delivery of that, but I didn't know this was going to be on the agenda tonight until late Friday. So I'm sorry that I got in late, and I assume, Sue, you got the letter?
Yes.
And it got distributed along with some letters from other supporting organizations. This letter came out of a concept, because I've been attending Watertown Water Set Alliance and Timbrook Alliance, about what do you do to keep an eye on water quality in your communities? And the bottom line that came out of those discussions is the thing that really counts are measurements. You can have plans, you can have inspections, you can have a whole bunch of things, and as we know, especially in this town, our inspections on some of the large commercial projects have been deficient in the last year. That's documented. So the basic recommendation that I'm putting forward in this letter, and I won't go through it here.
Okay.
But the basic concept is you can have all the plans in the world, but what really counts is the end result of what happens to the water quality. And the way you do that is to actually measure it at a location, and we have for this project a unique location where you can pick up all the impacts, and that's what I'm suggesting. I'm not an expert on this, and I think a town environmental engineer, or Jim Farr, or somebody would have some insight on it, but that's a way of really testing, are they right with their assumptions? Did things go right? Whatever. This is hard data, so let's believe in hard data, not assumptions, not specs, not what can happen. And just as a last point, you've got to realize that every water treatment plant in the area and every construction project in this area has had approved plans by engineers, by the DEC, and everything else, and problems still happen. So my own point is, let's find out the real data and then act on the results of that data. If it comes out clean, that's fine. If it comes out with problems, let's fix it, because I think it's our common goal to make sure there's not a problem in our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Kristin.
Hello.
Hi.
A little bit better. So since I've been elected, since election, yeah, I've spent a lot of time in town hall, talking to the various departments, and I was... And I've spent some time in the planning board office. So my question to you guys is, who has actually reviewed the plans for Sailfish's decision tonight?
The site plan?
Yeah. Oh, the whole... The whole kit and caboodle.
Yeah.
Right? The wastewater treatment plant, the site plan, the SWIP, everything that's been submitted. Which one of you planning board members have reviewed it?
I've done the lighting.
You've done the lighting? Okay, because what's interesting is, I was in... I was in the meeting room on Thursday, and I was shown the plans that were all in plastic bags and a box that was taped up. I was there today at noon, and I have pictures on my phone. I was there today at noon, at actually 12:20, when I opened those bags and I opened that taped box and reviewed the plans, and there are significant changes. So if you review the plans... How did you review the plans in seven hours?
Our engineer and our consultants have signed off on the plans. They're actually final plans.
They're final plans, but there's significant changes in the plans. There's 18... 18 different changes in those plans.
And they've been reviewed.
They've been reviewed by you guys or by your consultant?
Our consultants. We've looked at them, but we, you know, we get them all online, too.
Okay. So... Because that's my concern. If you guys are just following your consultant, you guys are on the board to review them also, and you have two PEs that can also review them that sit on this board, whether you're licensed... Whether you use it, you're licensed or not, the fact is that you're both qualified. So my concern is that you're just following your consultant and you're not reviewing the actual work. So you're telling me that every one of you guys reviewed it online?
We have it. We have it.
Even though you did not look at the paper plans? Today's paper plans? The paper plans that are in the planning board office? You have them?
I looked at the latest plans, but I have Sailfish paper.
Oh, I agree. They're big, because there's bags of them.
Everything's been reviewed.
But there is significant changes. I mean, complete change in the staging of the constructing phase of the SWIP. You changed the access from 747 to 17K. The primary access is...
We've gone off through all that. We've vetted it. It's been... That was at the last public hearing that was stated.
It was stated before. I thought that it was going to be all 747. So when did it?
It's been 17K.
Been 17K.
Kristin, I have plans on the lighting. I have reviewed them carefully. I made major changes for the... To these original plans.
The utility plan that's dated 10-17?
I've got it right here.
Okay.
They better look like this.
Okay.
Because that's what I told the chairman and the board that I know.
Because that was my concern. I mean, I hope that your plans have in the box that they were revised on 10-17-19, because that is the plans that I looked at today. And if not, there is changes on the utility plan.
Okay. Thanks. Anyone else? Yes. Karina.
Good evening. Karina Tipton, Montgomery. I sent an email to you all this afternoon as well, and I understand it has... I sent it to the town website, and Sue was good enough to distribute it as well. Thank you. The public hearing did close for Sailfish in September, but, you know, the plans keep coming in. They keep coming in, and there have been significant public comments on the plans that were received in September. There's been no changes, from what I've heard, on the plans that have come out in October, specifically with respect to temporary construction impacts to the local community. The planning board does have a responsibility under secret to evaluate and minimize to the greatest extent possible, under CEPR, New York State requirements, both long-term and temporary impacts to the community. The fact that there remains a construction entrance only on 17K, which was justified by the applicant in the environmental impact statement as relying on the permanent traffic impact study, which underestimated the quantity of traffic that was going to be coming and going from the site during construction. Basically, they said, "We don't have to worry about construction impacts because the permanent traffic impacts are really small." But the permanent traffic impacts are really small because they say all the traffic will go on and off of site from 747. Says there will be nothing going on and off the site from 17K, and if it does, it's just for emergencies and it's only a right-hand turn. We're talking about at least... At least eight months of heavy construction traffic on and off the site, making right and left-hand turns on 17K. And as far as I know, there has been no mitigation to that point. And that's the email summarizing in a second. There's been other issues with the traffic statements as well on this process, which have been discussed, not addressed, undercounting for permanent impacts specifically from other businesses that are cited on 1747, hundreds of cars undercounted. I mean, you guys are going to vote today on the site plans? You've had them under revision since September, when the public gave their final comment on them, and I just want to ask you to seriously concern, have you done everything you can on behalf of the community that you are representing to minimize those temporary construction impacts? You're right down the street from a school. You're on an intersection that's got a lot of accidents already, and you're talking about construction traffic, large cast concrete forms going in and out of the site for eight months, quantities of dirt, huge amounts of construction workers. I want the construction workers to be safe, too. They're going to be making right-hand and left-hand turns at an uncontrolled, unsafe intersection, in and out of a temporary construction entrance. Please consider that as you're evaluating your site plans tonight. Thank you.
Yes, we want to wrap this up pretty soon, as we have public hearing. Yes, sir?
How you doing? Michael Gatos, Hudson Valley Building Trades. I'm here with members from Montgomery Walden. So I'd just like to say, I've been hearing all the negative points of it, but I'm sure this board has done their due diligence. The engineers that they hire... When you build a house, there's changes. This is a major project, a big project. Of course, there's going to be changes, and they'll be vetted. Like this gentleman said, he looked at the electrical. The engineer in the back is going to check every... You guys are going to do your due diligence. So they hired you to do your job, I'm sure you'll do your job. They've done everything that they've asked to do, so I hope this board will take that all into consideration and vote the correct way.
Thank you. Take one more comment. Fred?
Fred Martschodogge, Montgomery. To my left is a comprehensive map of the studies of the proposed projects before you... Before the Town Montgomery itself and the impact. You take a look at all the sites and everything else that's going on in that area, and to throw more on top of it, initiate individual village, where is the traffic study? Where is that one that studies? Everything is being done. For what? What reason? We put together this to show an impact of what is possible or probable, yet still on your approval stages. So if you approve everything right there, you're driving everybody out of this town just to avoid traffic. Thank you.
Yes, Susan?
Okay, as far as due diligence goes, Mr. Gatos. My case in point is Dollar General. Remember I said that Mike Hayes may comment, and you said he had no participation in it? Had Mike Hayes is the one that was saying that you don't need to change the speed limit, you don't need a crossing lane, the only kids walking are kids that are... Miss the school bus. I mean, nonsense. Nonsense. And that went before the planning board. We didn't ask to have a light, traffic light. Mr.?
We did.
Well, Mr. Hamilah is repeatedly, from March until August, saying, you know, your supervisor isn't paying attention, he's not... He's not asking for support from the DOT. I mean, this thing... And I'll tell you, I work at the school, and they hate it. There's been 21 accidents there already. There's no traffic light. And regarding that, you don't have a cumulative impact study for traffic for all these things. The DOT is understaffed. I know that for a fact. So you have no idea what cumulative impact of construction vehicles and eventually the delivery vehicles will be. So when there's an issue and a fatality or something... Bill Kelly, I believe you looked at the lights. I think that the sealed package in the other room is very telling. It's indicative of this.
What else? Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to our first regularly scheduled public hearing. It's on Autumn Sky Development Company, Inc., North Hurry Lane, SCU permit, site plan, and two lot subdivision. This is an opening... I'm sorry, Bracken Road 20. I'm sorry. Bracken Road Properties LLC, Bracken 20 Warehouses, Bracken Road Leonard's Drive. Thanks, Rich. SCU permit, and site plan, and two lot subdivision. This is a continuation of a public hearing. We opened in our last meeting. How are you, Dave?
Good. How you doing tonight?
Good. Good. If you could bring us up to speed where we're at.
Okay, just real quick. There was eight items listed last time when we were here. Five of them have been addressed, and three we're still waiting for review comments from various entities.
Okay.
First thing was required all truck traffic to be directed to the west. No way it turns out of the site. That has been added to the plans. A detail, the proposed signage for each lot will be needed. We have added that also to the plans, showing basically a monument sign. And obviously, we won't be able to fill that in until we get the actual tenants, but the details on how it will be constructed. The Corps of Engineers wetland approachment was sent over to Sue to her attention with the water quality certificate in there, also from DEC. The county comments were received. I think Leslie followed up with the county planner and got those to us. We do have that. There was only three comments on there, and I'll be addressing those with the plans. And then the combination of the two drives on Lot 1B, we have gone ahead and done that on the... Of course, it's not showing on there.
Okay.
But we did.
On your new submission you have.
We did combine these two drives, yes.
Wonderful.
Sorry about that. Forgot about that. But the one over there, we would have to cross the wetlands there, and we also have to get easements back and forth. So that's the five that were addressed. The fire department, we sent letters in to Sue that showed that we, again, sent the plans to the fire department. We haven't heard back from them yet. The lighting review, Mr. Kelly has, and the landscaping plan also is still out with your consultant.
Karen, yes. She should get back to us soon on that. Okay.
So that's... That's the word is now.
All right. This is a continuation of a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like... Has a comment or question on Bracken 20 Warehouses? Please just identify yourself for the record. Anyone? Okay. Board, any questions or comments on Bracken 20?
Fred, I'm just getting to it. I have it to you. Do you have a light?
Okay. Okay. And so you're going to... We're do a submission then, addressing our consultant's comments?
I was hoping to get the landscaping and the lighting so we could wrap it all up.
Do it all at once? Okay?
Yeah.
We'll work a little extra hard getting our landscaping comments to you.
I appreciate it.
And then, once we get a resubmission, then we can move forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we able to close the public hearing tonight, or do we need to leave that open?
We've heard from the county. Anybody see any reason why we... We don't want to close the hearing without at least a plan.
Okay.
Showing what we want to... What we're going to end up looking at.
Okay.
Yeah, because combined driveways and signage and all of that. Yeah, let's leave it open until... Okay? Oh, we got the affidavit?
We did, but this may have been from a different project file, and you may be needing this in a different file. And I'd ask the last thing, if you have the green cards and any returned envelopes?
Yes. Okay. I've got them right here with me. And I actually have the original of the affidavit regular. These are the ones I've received so far.
Okay. So I take it that you started to revise plans, just haven't printed them out?
Right. I apologize about that. That was...
No, that's fine.
My oversight.
That's fine, because you want our landscape comments and lighting comments anyway.
Right.
We meet in two weeks. The question is whether or not you would be able to turn them around and we could review them in time. Were there significant enough changes? Were we have the lot? Do we have to do? We have...
20 comments. They were all dot D, cross the T's type stuff.
All right. Why don't we do this? Why don't we reconvene at 7:30 on the 9th of December? Hopefully by then, we'll have a resubmission, and if we have everything in order, then we can see where we are then.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Does this sound good to everybody? I entertain a motion to continue this hearing on Bracken 20 Warehouses, December... Monday, December 9th at 7:30. Motion by Bill, seconded by Rose. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now we can go to Autumn Sky Development Company, Inc., North Hurry Lane. Thanks for your patience. Steve, representing the applicant. Mike Morganti, how are you, Mike?
Good. How are you all tonight?
Good. If you could get us up to date on the plan?
Do you want some evidence?
Yes. Yep, yep. We got affidavit. Okay. Get them.
Good evening, everyone. How are you tonight?
Good.
A busy agenda, I see. So try to take up as little of your time as possible. How's everyone doing? So before you tonight, obviously, we have... I'll just give you a quick recap of this here before the board. My name's Michael Morganti, the project engineer for this application, which consists of some self-storage units up front of the property on North Hurry Lane, and in the rear of the property, what we have is proposed 30,000 square foot warehouse. The project will also include a subdivision of the two proposed uses. We'll have an entrance... A common entrance off of North Hurry Lane, which will serve both the storage units and the warehouse. We've prepared extensive stormwater management plan for the board, its consultants review, which has been vetted for close to a year and a half at this point. Proposing infiltration basins in most of the locations to try to recharge groundwater hydrology in this area. In total, what you have here is essentially, again, a two-lot subdivision with a warehouse proposed in the rear to the east, or I should say to the west, self-storage units up to the front. We've received the zoning board appeals variance for a front, you know, subback also for this particular project for the storage units toward the front. We've actually already had a public hearing for that, so many board of appeals variance. And so we're here before the board now tonight for the public hearing. I've given you a general overview of the plans, last round of comments that I received from the consultants. We've addressed all of them that we know to our best of our knowledge, and at this point, I'll open it up to the board, its consultants, and any public comment that you may have on the project.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to have a... Has a question or like to make a comment on this project? Yes. Karina?
Karina Tipton, Montgomery. I just have... I... It's a question, really. I was looking on the Orange County property online, the real property online, and the tax maps that the Orange County offices provide, and this lot is listed as residential on that resource. I do know that on the zoning maps, which are also available online through Orange County, it is listed as the IB, and I just wanted to point out that discrepancy to the group. I'm not sure if that... If that has an impact on this application or not. Thank you.
Yeah, the next zone to the... The next lot to the north, Karina, is RA2.
Okay. The actual... The actual parcel on the Orange County database says zoning RA2 for this actual parcel as well.
2616714.
Yes. They have it listed as 1142. And it says... It's a May 2018, if I recall correctly, subdivision map. That's the tax map that they refer to.
Yeah, it must be wrong. It's gotta be wrong, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Thanks. Anyone else in the audience have any questions or comments on Autumn Sky? Okay, board?
Mike? I have the print, WLS print. I got a couple of comments for him. He wanted to change the co-location on the entrance drive. I want the residential areas, I always do, protected better and the shielding that I can get on that unit will do a better job.
Sure.
But other than that, his average lighting is pretty good. I have a quick color rendition he dropped down on that. Kind of get a more acceptable color to the average person. And I add more visors or shields on the lighting, but I think we got a pretty good deal going because everything slows down, so I don't have to worry too much about it.
The warehouse, I agree, yes.
Right. So I'll be booking to him. He'll get you a print, and then you can put it on your letter and then you get it to me, so I can get a letter of perfect crew vote to the chair.
Sure.
Thanks for your help.
Thank you.
You have comments from the county?
Yes, we did receive the comments from the county. Would you like me to address those, or?
No. I mean, our engineer has comments also. A number... I don't know if you got them, dated November 12th?
I have not received them.
Okay, we'll get them to you.
Okay.
Email them over. No sense addressing them. You can address everything all together. Leslie, your comments are up to date on this, or?
No, they are not. I have not reviewed them.
Okay. Yes, Rose?
So I'm going to copy of the Ian Hamil from that quote that was said at 30 seconds.
Matt Hunt, the chief?
No.
All right, chief?
Okay, so I'll forward you that copy. Okay?
Matt Hunt, I think, has actually reviewed this hearing.
Yep. He just sent another comment today.
Okay.
Okay, so you have Leslie's and Andrews?
And the fire department.
Matt's? County comments? We'll get your comments from Karen. Karen? And Bill, you're working on the lighting?
Yes.
Okay. Sure, Rich.
Yes, this is for Andrew. Do we need to get a light, storage buildings in the front for fire department and large duty, guns, et cetera?
For a large truck. For a large fire truck. No, they can pull in and then pull out. There's no maneuverability around there. Yeah. Similar to the other ones that we've seen. It's for the 25 and 30-foot lanes. But can you go in there and spin around? No. No, not a large vehicle.
And, uh, do we need to get around on the west side of the large building? Is that something that's gonna be required from the fire department?
Well, on the, on the southwest corner, there is maneuverability for large trucks.
Right.
You know, the northern, uh, the northwest side is really just passenger vehicles, it's a dead end, so... But there's maneuverability, uh, there's room to maneuver on the south entrance. Yes.
Yeah, now, the fire company's been very, um, diligent about their reviews on these, for safety purposes, access. So they've been good, uh, with applicants on all of these, meeting and going through all the plans and, and getting what they need to get around. So, I'm sure that, you know, you get this email, this message, we go from there.
Yep.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes?
Fred Murks Montgomery, I just wanna know how many parking spots are gonna be associated with each project on... Especially like the warehouse and the self-storage areas?
So we have thirty-nine parking spaces shown in the back over here for the warehouse, and we have, um, about six parking spaces shown for the...
Thirty-eight and six?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Fred, I said...
Yes, John?
And Mike, is that underground cable easement active? You've been in contact with AT&T?
Is it active? No, they don't, uh, they have it used, but they haven't used it for forty years, the cable's abandoned. And actually, if I want to, I can work with them and try to move it later, if I, you know, so, but I... We were able to design around, but I contacted them, they were willing to move it if I needed to, but I ended up, we ended up getting a layout that works, so...
Okay, but at this time, there's no...
It hasn't been used for forty years. Not, not used, no?
Right, hard wire, too, isn't it?
What's that?
Right, cable, that bigger, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know, 'cause my neighbor accidentally hit it and broke it, happens, nothing happens.
Really?
Like, twenty years ago, so...
Well, it's AT&T, isn't it?
Yeah. This is before, this is before cell phones.
Right.
Prior to cell phones.
Right.
I wanna push yours keeping, um, that corner, when I looked at it again today, it's still a dumping ground, I'm sure you're...
I'm, I got somebody coming this weekend.
That'd be great, yeah, it's just, it's just a nice corner. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's all, Fred, thank you.
Okay. Uh, anyone else? So, we'll get to our comments as soon as we can, um...
Would it be possible to be back on for the December meeting also? Receive the comments and try to address them?
I mean, we can, we only meet one time in December. So, why don't we have you come in, uh, we'll see where we're at, hopefully at least we can discuss it some more. We'll, we'll have some answers, I hope by then, and you'll have, uh, more to work on from the comments that you do have.
Sure.
Okay? Make sense to everybody? So we'll reconvene this hearing on Monday, December ninth of this year, at seven forty. That make sense? Okay? Entertained a motion to reconvene in this meeting, this hearing by Jay, seconded by John, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next this evening is, uh, Ponson Montgomery, New York State Route seventeen K, fourteen lot major subdivision with one commercial lot. This is amendments to subdivision, I think it may be the oldest, Mike? Mike? Preliminary approved subdivision we have. How are you, John?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Been a while.
Yeah. Representing the applicant is John Queenen from Langton Pully, project engineers and planners. If you could, uh, get us up to speed, that'd be great.
Sure, uh, good evening, everyone. As the chairman alluded to, we are, we are here before you, but we're probably the oldest, if not the oldest, uh, ongoing subdivision that was approved originally back two thousand and seven. Re-approved with conditional final back in two thousand and nine. I'm sure you all familiar with giving it numerous extensions every, every three months. Finally, owner believes that, um, potentially has a fire port. And making going over the overall review of the subdivision, it was originally proposed, and, and how we got there, I think I know, and I'll explain it. We had a twenty-eight foot wide, over the center, that had curves and sidewalks on one side with catch bases and piping. And on the other side of the road, no curves, swell, driveway coves. And that road extends basically from seventeen K up to the boundary of the property, where it was connecting to another subdivision at the time that was proposed. I guess it was a quite large subdivision on the lands of, uh, Lansbury. So fast forward to this point in time, the property that was Lansbury has already been apparently subdivided into four lots. And I think, we think that this road, at the time, was intended to be a little bit wider and provide the sidewalks, because at one point, it was thought that it could potentially be a, a connection through the Bailey Road. That may still happen, you never know, but it looks like at this point in time, that's already been subdivided, single-family lots reside there. So back reviewing this subdivision, looking at making the road more rural, in line with the fourteen lots that are, that are proposed there. So we would like, we would like to do as an amendment prior to the, because we have a conditional final approval, so prior to that finishing, we're proposing to make the road twenty-four feet wide, and remove the curb and the sidewalk that's on, that was only on one side of the street. And the lighting that went with that for the sidewalk. And bring it back more to the town's rural road cross-section, which was twenty-two foot wide with swells on each side. We would put the, the dry swells on each side of the street, everybody would match driveway coves, just, just like the typical town spec is today. Uh, we would keep it two foot wider, just, I just like twenty-four foot, it's a much more standard road. The town spec is twenty-two for a rural road with shoulders, so we would do the twenty-four pave from side to side. The initial entrance, we would keep the same, and we would keep it wider at the twenty-eight, because there's that, uh, proposed piosk area for the Macedon and the historical pull-off there. With the benches and the landscaping, all of that would remain the same, we'd actually keep the sidewalks there, um, up until this point, where that resides.
Okay.
So this would all stay the same as, as it was originally approved. It would pass this commercial lot that still resides there. We'd keep that all the same in case this ever gets developed in the future, whatever, whatever it may be, single-family house, commercial. And then from here, paper down, back to twenty-four, just after this parking area for the pios.
Okay. So up to the commercial lot, it's the same plan?
It's the same plan.
Okay.
It's the same plan. Because right here is the commercial driveway, here's the pull-off to the pios. We'd keep the sidewalks, we'd keep the crosswalk, and we'd keep the sidewalk, just in case this ever got developed, it would be a commercial lot for whatever reason. And then from there, there's this transition zone before you hit to the residential, that's where we'd throw it down, and then continue to twenty-four.
Okay. Yeah, I think the, um... The ability for that to be a through road is gone, if I, from, from the, the applications on Bailey Road and the subdivision out there. I don't think there's a way out anymore, even if you were to be in, in agreement with a, a landowner. I, I don't think you can make, it can work.
I didn't, I didn't think so either, but...
I think it's, there, there's no further subdivision on some of those lots, and I don't... So... Um, right, and it'd be a bowl?
Yup, same cul-de-sac bowl.
The standard cul-de-sac bowl, with the island in the middle.
Correct.
Okay, um...
Yeah, nothing else, design-wise, lot layout-wise, grading, basically, we just took the road end, four feet, and removed the curb and the sidewalk. In doing so, we replaced the curb that had a couple of catch bases on it with a swell.
We do.
And where the, where the, where the curb terminated used to be a catch basin, that's been removed, and now it's just, just a culvert crossing.
Okay. And there, there's still a stormwater pond?
Yep, none of the drains overall is being changed, we're doing everything.
Oh, you are?
Yeah, this, this basically leads down, there's two crossings here, they lead down to the dry swells here, and then the dry swell's still into an infiltration basin in the rear.
Okay.
Leading at the same size as it was a twenty-four.
The shoulder's gonna be fairly firm, like for a large vehicle, if they had to go off the road?
Yeah, normally, we would do twenty-four pave, and then you have either a two or a three-foot, item four shoulder, and then you have to get through the swell.
So you'd have your twenty-eight, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't use it, only if you really needed it.
Yeah.
Um, any idea when the town's gonna get their kiosk and benches? You're gonna do that as part of building your road?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And the first three hundred feet is already been built.
Mm-hmm.
So it would be probably pretty quick to there.
Okay.
And I did speak with the, with the owner, um, over the last few weeks, uh, he, he will provide the historical marker.
Yes, Andrew?
You know, regarding the stormwater, a couple of, plenty of board members were talking about new swap, new standards, and everything. I mean, inherently, in what John is describing, he's, he's more closely meeting the today's standards by taking the stormwater out of the pipe, out of the clo- closed system, and putting it into an open system with the ditches, so he's much more closely matching, uh, today's standard. It, it's gonna slow down the water, it's gonna give it more room to infiltrate. It's more, it's more in keeping with the residential standards that, uh, the town uses today, uh, for the rural society. It's a better design.
Yes, we want to send this to the, uh, the Sean Marist, Iowa superintendent, his take on it. We did. Yes, Bill?
John, is the cul-de-sac our standard?
Yes.
Okay. It's too good, yeah. John, I know that the traffic is gonna be reduced because of no time. But because of the distance back in there, kinda like the sidewalk, not that maybe it could be done without a curb, but that may be a little difficult. But that gives me some concern, because if you got, you know, one or two kids in a house, and the cars coming from the back aren't gonna be thirty miles an hour, they're probably gonna be doing more than that, as you could suspect. And I'm worrying a little bit about safety of these, uh, people walking there. That's the only thing that bothers me about getting up the sidewalk, not the lights, not the curves, but it's the sidewalk. And I don't know, thought any other way that might possibly improve that. I know you don't want it up next to the road, because obviously, then you'd have to put a curb in. So, I didn't, I'm just asking you as, you know, as an engineer who does, goes up against this sort of thing much of the time?
No, I, I, it's a valid concern, a hundred percent. It's just, uh, we feel that the sidewalk was only on one side of the street, proposed, so you're really only benefiting seven lots. Whereas everyone else would, would cross the street or walk in the street anyway to get, to get to their, to get to their homes. As well as it being a cul-de-sac, now you're not gonna have that through traffic per se.
Through.
It's about eighteen hundred feet long, so I don't necessarily know how, how fast that they're gonna get going, eighteen hundred feet before you hit the bowl. Probably in that range, maybe thirty, thirty-five, I would assume you can get up to. But since it was only servicing half of the subdivision, the other half had no sidewalk anyway, I feel like you're still gonna get the traffic in the street no matter what. And we wanted to bring it back to a more rural setting than more, why does this side of the street look like a suburban, urban type, and this side doesn't? So we wanted it to be a little more uniform. But I did keep the sidewalks in that first, I'll call it, zone before you hit the houses. So that anyone who's dropped off at the entrance can take a sidewalk up, basically, to the first house. So you're kind of out of that zone of no houses, maybe people are coming in, going out, maybe going a little faster. So in that case, I, I think that hopefully alleviates the concern, 'cause once they get into the residential neighborhood, it's like any other residential neighborhood, it's kind of what we want.
I think having that commercial lot, you're gonna get people that don't live there go in and use it maybe someday.
Correct.
That's the idea. I think by the time they get past that, it may need to be some signage, slow children play, dead end or something.
Okay.
So people that are using that store, or whatever that could be, oh, they know they, they're not supposed to go down there. You know, in some communities, they put a couple of speed humps in there, but I don't think, I don't know.
Yeah, you've, I've done them, many, you can do that, too.
I don't know how Sean would feel about that, 'cause that's gonna have the...
They would.
But we, we are keeping the lighting for that first stretch also, so there'll be lighting there.
I like everything you did, John, but now we're moving a little bit back, and I'm a little disappointed. But I gotta tell you, today's cars can get up to sixty miles an hour before...
I'm not saying that somebody...
These guys jumping in, they're late in the morning, they can fly out of that road, that, that's what's giving me a little concern.
I will tell you this, in, in most of the, in the skies I do work in, it's funny, when you're, when you're doing a sidewalk project, or you've read on the sidewalks, most of the people, or children, at least the children, they don't walk sidewalks, they still walk in the street, so, um...
And they don't move up.
Take that bounce for what it is, and it's...
They'll be walking in a ditch, going to school, I don't care.
Yeah.
Or going to get the bus, well, mom and dad will drive them up to get the bus.
Yeah, there is a bus waiting area in the front with a...
With a ridge?
Yep, yep, with a turnoff, for that, too. And it is only fourteen lots, so you're not gonna have a, a major generation of...
Okay, anybody else have any questions, comments?
Fred, I agree with you, that identifying it as a residential area at that point.
Yeah, you get people in, whatever kind of business, I mean, who knows?
Yeah, just some kind of identification.
Yeah, private, private road, uh, slow children playing, you know, there's a number of things, speed limit.
Yeah, we can, we can serve it, yeah. We have the dead end sign now, so we can make that...
I think it'd be a good idea. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, next we'll, uh...
Do we owe you comments?
Yes, I have, did not receive them.
Yeah, we'll get you some comments on plan, and, um...
Are you gonna contact the Iowa superintendent, or should I?
We already have.
We have, oh, perfect.
We'll inform you, so we'll follow up.
Okay.
Other than that, I think we're all set. We'll get your comments, and we'll see how we, how we move along.
All right, ready?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good to you, John.
Okay. Next this evening is, uh, Blue Water Industrial Partners LLC, project sales fish, New York State Route seventeen K and seven forty-seven. SEU permit site plan, approved with decision. Um, I know Morgan had received about a week ago, um, a rendition of what the waste, the WWT Waste Order Treatment, uh, plant would look like to outside of the building. And I know there had been some, um, conversation, um, via email, phone calls on that. It's twenty by sixty, and the twenty-foot portion faces seventeen K, correct? It's four hundred and sixty back, feet back from the road roughly, probably the right-of-way. There's a stormwater pond and pretty extensive landscaping, I think. What does everybody think?
I had a particular concern about the human environment of this type of facility.
Okay.
And corrosion that caused to the metal walls, roof, et cetera. Continuous moisture and, uh, perhaps some corrosive chemicals stored in there. I don't really know how fast the walls will deteriorate. My concern is basically if the town takes ownership, that they're not gonna have a big maintenance issue to deal with.
Okay, um, these plants, these, these buildings are metal buildings. They're vented, so that the moisture doesn't build up inside, not like a fog inside.
You know, the board went to look at the one that was over in, uh...
The Storm King.
Storm King. Chuck, do you wanna speak to this, uh, coating or protection on that building?
Good evening, for the record, my name's Charles Utsch, with the firm Langton Engineering. So, so these treatment plants are put inside these metal buildings. I mean, there is more moisture than you would have in a normal situation, but there's also a ventilation system, you get air turnover. And so the moisture level stays in control, and so the one that some of the board members wanted to look at is Storm King. And it's been in operation for quite a bit of time, there's really no signs of deterioration. So it's not, it's not a design issue that we're concerned about, we put these treatment plants inside metal buildings all the time.
Chuck, about how long has that, the station been in, roughly, take a guess, fifteen?
Eight years, ten.
I, I wanna say somewhere between five and ten years.
Okay.
It's not an unusual installation for us to use a, a metal building around these treatment plants. plants.
Is the fan operated with a humidistat or is it just on?
No, there's a humidity control sensor to it, as is there, you know, there's a moderate, modest amount of heat that gets circulated in the facility also. So it's, you know, there's an ambient temperature that they try to maintain.
Oh, the weather?
Mm-hmm.
Uh-huh, okay.
Yeah, you don't want to...
You've got all above ground exposed piping and although it's circulation of waste, it's still, there's, like I said, they keep an ambient temperature in the building itself just to make sure that the incoming pipes don't freeze.
Okay. All right. Did we want to talk a minute about color scheme or... I mean, it was shown as a white building with a green roof, I believe, or white with a blue roof?
Was it cream colored?
Cream colored.
Take your pick. We'll paint it whatever color you want us to.
I like autumn colors. Autumn colors. If cream meets it, I don't know.
Cream and green?
Yeah.
Green roof and cream colored? Now...
Russell's making a good point that she has a wooden home basically. But when the leaves are off, if it wasn't for the fact that it was more muted, earth tones, you could see, you could see it through the trees.
Yeah.
A cream color would pretty, I think that, you know, all white would be kind of the same thing, so...
This is really at the board's discretion. I mean, we've heard arguments about, or people say that certain colors help them blend in, like green. This is five hundred plus feet away from the street. You're on a street that you're going forty miles an hour. You know, the visual part of this is really fairly limited. But again, we'd be glad to paint it whatever color this board would like us to.
Cream. Green roof.
We can submit, we can submit something. One of the conditions is that we submit a paint slab and a roof color so that the board is comfortable with it. I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that.
Okay.
In the wintertime, it's gonna be so far back, or in the summertime, it's gonna be so far back, you're not gonna be able to see it through the trees.
Yeah, that's true.
Because I know in the summertime, it gets in my house, in the wintertime, it's...
I believe the intention will be, will be to hide it.
I mean, we have about three layers of planting as you work from the street going back.
Right.
Some of which those layers are evergreen, so you'll have your ear around green. It's only twenty feet high, so it's not much higher than a garage, so it's really not a, it doesn't have a big presence.
Okay, you'll provide us some swatches.
We will.
Basically, we got the idea. Everybody okay with that? Okay? Is there anything else we want to discuss on Sailfish?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Chuck a question. Chuck, tonight, a new member of our town board elected, gonna take a second in January, raised a good point on some of the plans that we've been looking at. I sent a note to the chairman approving the lighting, which was substantially less than originally planned, as you know. And Dan Baxley sent me a copy of plans. I used the dates, the revision dates and everything in my memo to the chairman. Now, if he sees a different revision date, he shouldn't sign it. He should get back to me. I'm asking you, did that revision date say that, has that been changed or do you want to check the lighting plans and see that it hasn't been changed?
I would tell you, there's been no substantive changes to the lighting plan since we got your okay. There have been other minor changes in the plans, minor changes in the plans.
But not the lighting?
Not the lighting.
And so nobody went through the whole set of plans that, like, now, this happened to me on a job today.
So we'd be glad to make sure that the right cross-reference is there.
I appreciate it.
I'm pretty confident that what you approved is what's on our plans.
That's great. That's all I'm asking for. Because I got crossed up on that today.
Well, we don't want that to happen. Clearly, with the intent was to provide a plan that complied with your review, so that's where we want to be.
Somebody went through a set of twenty sheets today and dated every one and changed the revision date, so this I don't want to happen. So anyway, thank you. You look into that and if it's...
Make sure.
That'll be great. Thank you. Thank you.
The other thing about viewing it from seventeen K is that the road coming into the plant is dropping down. Their road is way up and the road from coming into the plant is coming down and dropping down into where the plant is. So essentially, the road acts as berm to further hide, you know, screen it more from the west than from the east, but there's more screening there just the fact that the road being elevated, the driveway coming down, so it'll further screen.
The elements of the designers are meant to screen at the best extent they can. And eventually, when it fills in, that's the movie. Get us a swatch, I appreciate it.
Just pull them.
Board, anything else? Yes, Ryan?
I was hoping Chuck could answer a question about the construction phasing.
Sure.
I know we had gone back and forth with some correspondence on that because of the phase numbering, one through six. So I was hoping you could just summarize for everybody here in the audience, kind of what you know.
Okay. So we had to number them. We could've gone one to six, we could've gone A through whatever letter was. The numbering system is not necessarily pre-described how the sequence will have to go. The contractor is limited only to an area of disturbance. So although we've set a sequencing that your engineering department, your engineering consultants have reviewed and approved, the intent is to start construction on seventeen K to come in and office seven forty-seven as quickly as we can get the culverts delivered to the site. So the drive office seven forty-seven is number six, but our intent is to start it as soon as we have the culverts available. They're not, they're not interlinked only in one sense. We can't go beyond fourteen acres of disturbance. We can do phase one and then phase four. We can do phase one and then phase two, as long as we stay within the limit of disturbance. Now, the sequencing, other than the secondary driveway, the primary driver office seven forty-seven, the sequencing that we proposed has some logic to it because the earthwork balances pretty well. So the contractor is likely to follow the sequencing, except for the driveway office seven forty-seven. And that one, we want to start as soon as we have the culverts.
Also add some permits you're getting from DOT for the temporary entrance and things like that.
Correct. So again, both the driveways that we'll be using for construction will have to be permitted by DOT and will be dictated by maintenance protection of traffic that they're gonna require us to do, any kind of signalization, I mean, sync signs, all that will be governed by DOT. Both these driveways are DOT driveways. So they're gonna make us put in appropriate provisions so that they're safely operated during construction. And we've started that process.
Okay. Board, any other questions?
Chuck, will you please, or Dan Baxley, get back to me, just confirm that?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, bear with me. Go through this as quickly as I can. This is Town Montgomery Planning Board Resolution granting a special exception use permit and site plan approval for Project Sailfish. It's dated today, November twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen. Whereas on March sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, Blue Water Industrial Partners LLC submitted an application for a site plan approval to the Town Montgomery Planning Board for Project Sailfish, a proposed warehouse distribution facility on approximately one hundred and eighty-seven acres of land located on four lots near I-84 in the intersection of New York State Route Seventeen K and seven forty-seven in the Town Montgomery. Whereas Project Sailfish would consist of amongst, among other things, a warehouse building containing one million, ten thousand, eight hundred and eighty square feet of space, one thousand sixty car parking spaces, two hundred and twenty-five trailer parking spaces, wastewater treatment plant, water treatment facility and water storage tank, stormwater management bases, basins and improvements, accessory driveways to and from the site, lighting, landscaping, signage and other related improvements. And whereas on February twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, the project sponsor petitioned the Town Montgomery Town Board to amend the Town Montgomery zoning map to rezone approximately seventy-seven point one acres of the project site from IB to I-two to facilitate the project. Pursuant to the town's zoning law, the project is a permitted use in I-two zoning district subject to the issuance of a special exception use permit and site plan approval from the planning board. And whereas on March twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, the project sponsor submitted an SEU, special exception use permit application to the planning board for the project. And whereas on April fifth, two thousand eighteen, the planning board's engineers issued comments on the project's conceptual site plans and other related documents. And whereas on August twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen, the project sponsor applied to the Town Montgomery ZBA for a minor area variance to reduce the size of the required off-street parking spaces. And whereas on September twelfth, two thousand eighteen, the Town Planning Board issued a letter to the ZBA stating that it was in favor of the minor area variance, granting a reduction in the size of parking space dimensions because a reduction would result in less land disturbance and previous surfaces on the project site. And whereas on September twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, the Orange County Planning Department issued a determination that the proposed minor parking space variance would not create any intermunicipal or countywide impacts if granted. And whereas on October tenth, two thousand eighteen, the planning board sent a letter to the town board stating that the planning board is generally in favor of the rezoning, especially because existing IB zoning will be retained along New York State Route Seventeen K and Route seven forty-seven. And whereas a project sponsor submitted an additional site plan and SEU application for proposed wastewater treatment plant as a municipal public works building to service the proposed project and potential future users in the eastern part of the town. At that time, the town was contemplating accepting ownership of the wastewater treatment plant once constructed, which had required additional site plan and SEU approvals under the zoning law. And whereas on October eighth, two thousand eighteen, the project sponsor submitted to the planning board a preliminary draft environmental impact statement, or DEIS, pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, or SEER, which contained initial site plans for the project. And whereas on November fifth, two thousand eighteen, and November twelfth, two thousand eighteen, the planning's board engineers submitted technical comments on the project's initial site plans in a preliminary DEIS. And whereas on September eighth, two thousand eighteen, the planning board as a lead agency accepted as complete a DEIS for the project pursuant to SEER. The DEIS contained site plans for the project which had been revised to address the planning board's engineers' comments. And whereas on September seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, November nineteenth of two thousand eighteen, and on January twenty-second of two thousand nineteen, the ZBA held duly noticed public hearings related to the requested minor area variance and... Whereas on December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, the planning board's engineer provided additional technical comments on the project's site plan. And whereas pursuant to New York general municipal law, the DEIS, the site plans and SEU applications were referred to the Orange County Planning Department and in response dated January seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, was received by the planning board. And whereas a planning board held a combined public hearing on January seventh of two thousand nineteen to accept verbal and written comments on the DEIS as well as the site plan and SEU applications. The hearing was continued on January fourteenth of two thousand nineteen. And whereas the planning board closed a public hearing on the DEIS on January fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, but extended the written comment period on the DEIS until January twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen. The board also accepted comments on the DEIS and the project's potential environmental impacts, even though the comment period on the DEIS had been closed. Specifically, public hearings were held on February eleventh, March eleventh, April twenty-ninth, May thirteenth, May twenty-eighth, June tenth, June twenty-fourth and July eighth in two thousand nineteen. March fifth, two thousand nineteen, the planning board's engineer provided further technical comments. May tenth, the project sponsor submitted to the planning board a final draft environmental impact statement. June tenth, July twenty-fifth and July twenty, and July thirty-first, the planning board's engineer provided comments on the completeness on the DEIS. Whereas on August first, the planning board accepted as complete a final environmental impact statement for the project, including revised site plans, which addressed all substantive comments on the DEIS, DEIS and the project from the planning board's consultants, the public and various agencies. And on August second of two thousand nineteen, the completed FEIS was submitted to the Orange County Planning Department for further comment and recommendation. Whereas a public hearing related to the revised site plans and SEU applications were continued on August twelfth, August twenty-sixth and September ninth of two thousand nineteen. The planning board also accepted public and agency comments on the FEIS at these hearings. And on August twenty-second of two thousand nineteen, the Orange County Planning Department issued comments on the FEIS and revised site plan and SEU applications. The Orange County Planning Department contained two binding comments that must be addressed and may not be acted upon contrary to, to accept by majority, plus twenty of the planning board. And the planning department, the Orange County Planning Department also issued three advisory comments. And on September fourth, the planning board's engineer issued a limited number of minor technical comments on revised site plan. And on September twenty-fourth, the planning board closed a public hearing related to the revised site plans and SEU application. Overall, a planning board held fourteen public hearings on the project's DEIS, FEIS, site plans and SEU applications. And whereas on September twenty-fourth of two thousand nineteen, the planning board as a lead agency issued a SEER finding statement for the project, finding that the project avoids or minimizes adverse environmental impacts to the maximum extent practicable and that adverse environmental impacts will be avoided or minimized to the maximum extent practicable by incorporating as conditions to the decision those mitigative measures that were identified as practicable and filed the SEER findings in accordance with all applicable laws. And on September twenty-sixth, the planning board's planners sent a SEER findings to the Orange County Planning Department. And October seventeenth of two thousand nineteen, BWI's engineer revised, submitted revised final site plans to the planning board engineer. The plans addressed the minor technical comments from the board's engineer. On November fourth of two thousand nineteen, the planning board's engineer issued a letter stating that he reviewed the final revised site plans and his remaining minor comments have been fully addressed and no further comments. And on November seventh, two thousand nineteen, the town board adopted number one, a SEER finding statement as required by SEER. Number two, local law seven of two thousand nineteen, amending the town zoning map to expand the I-two industrial park zoning district to facilitate the project. The map amendment established the project as a permitted use on the property subject to the issuance of the site plan approval and SEU permit from the planning board. And whereas on November twelfth of two thousand nineteen, BWI's engineer submitted to the planning board the final site plans that had been reviewed and accepted by the planning board's engineer. And whereas on November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, the ZBA approved number one, a SEER finding statement as required by SEER, and two, a minor area variance allowing the car parking stalls for the project to be reduced in size. On November twenty-fifth, the project sponsor withdrew its application for a SEUP for the wastewater treatment plant as a municipal public works building because the planning board had recommended that the town not accept ownership of the wastewater treatment plant at this time. However, as noted below, the board requested that the project sponsor provide the town with an offer of dedication for the wastewater treatment plant. Until the offer is accepted by the town, if ever, the wastewater treatment plant will be owned and operated by the project sponsor to serve the project only. And whereas a planning board's lighting expert and landscape architect reviewed and commented on the project's site plans on numerous occasions and the project sponsor revised the site plans to address their comments. Whereas the following federal, state and local agencies have already issued determinations, approvals and/or permits for the project, which have been provided to the planning board. U.S. Fish and Wildlife, DOT for the traffic signal for the site drive off of seven forty-seven. DOT concluded that the traffic mitigation plan for the project is the correct approach for mitigating traffic impacts from this development. DOT conceptually approved the site driveway onto seventeen K. The Federal Aviation Administration issued a determination of no hazard to air navigation for the project. The New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation issued a letter concluding that the project will have no adverse effect on historic or archaeological resources, provided certain steps were undertaken to move and preserve the Haber House. BWI has agreed to undertake these steps with oversight from Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation. U.S. Army Corps of Engineers issued a wetlands permit, allowing the construction of the project's access drive to seven forty-seven. It also allowed the creation of wetland mitigation area to offset the minor wetland impacts related to the driveway's construction. The Goldenham Fire District concluded all of their concerns have been addressed for the project. The Orange County Department of Health issued a certificate of approval for the project's water supply system. The New York State Department of Environmental Conservation issued the following permits related to the project. Freshwater wetlands permit, water quality certification and stream... Freshwater wetlands permit, water quality certification, and stream disturbance permit allowing construction of the project's access drive to 747, and a state pollutant discharge elimination systems, or Speedies, permit for the project's wastewater treatment plant. The Town of Montgomery Town Board approved the zoning map amendment, and the Town of Montgomery Zoning Board of Appeals approved a minor area variance request to reduce the dimension of parking stalls. Whereas the planning board has reviewed all submissions made by the project sponsor, all public and agency comments made during approximately nine-month public comment period, and has reviewed the SEU permit standards and site plan review standards set forth in the town zoning law. Throughout this lengthy review process, the planning board and its consultants requested numerous revisions to the project's site plans to be more protective of human health and the environment. And whereas a planning board's engineer, Andrew Featherston, P.E., conducted a comprehensive review of the project's final stormwater pollution prevention plan, or SWIP, and requested various revisions to the SWIP over a year period, as set forth in detail in the planning board's lead agency SEER finding statement. The planning board's engineer had recommended that a list of enhanced erosion control measures going above and beyond the requirements of the state's Stormwater Management Design Manual, as well as the town's laws, be used at the project site. The applicant has agreed to do so, and these protective measures have been incorporated into the project SWIP. The board's engineer reviewed the final SWIP submitted by the project sponsor and found it to be acceptable and in compliance with these measures. Whereas a project sponsor has obtained all other applicable environmental permits, as noted above, for the project prior to the approval of the final SWIP. And whereas a planning board has reviewed the final site plans and SEU permit applications and finds that they fully comply with the town's laws as described in the attached findings contained in attachments A and B here too. Now therefore, be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves a special exception use permit for Project Sailfish and finds that the project complies with the general standards for the issue of a SEU permit as set forth in the town zoning law. See findings in attachment A here too, which are incorporated into this resolution. And be it further resolved that the planning board hereby conditionally approves a site plan application for Project Sailfish, including the final site plans, subject to the conditions set forth below, and finds that the project complies with the general standards for site plan review and approval as set forth in town zoning law. See findings in attachment B here too, which are incorporated into this resolution. And be it further resolved that the planning board specifically approves the following final site plans dated November 21, 2018, prepared by Lang and Engineering. And there's two and a half, almost three pages of sheets, which is the full set of plans. Be it further resolved that the planning board approves the following architectural elevations for the project dated March 19, prepared by Michelin-Hugeback Architects Incorporated, including the following sheets which specify the style, material, and color reach elevations, and they're listed here. Be it further resolved that the planning board approves the building elevations for the wastewater treatment plant, drawing date C-2717 dated April 9, 2019, prepared by Lang and Engineering. Be it further resolved that the planning board approves the project's final stormwater pollution prevention plan dated September 28, last revised October 17 of this year, prepared by Lang and Engineering. It was dated September 28 of 2018, last revised October 17 of 2019, prepared by Lang and Engineering. Also, the board approves that up to 18 acres of soil may be disturbed at any one-time on the project's site, subject to strict compliance with the terms and conditions of the approved final SWIP, as specifically addressed in the planning board's lead agency SEER findings at page 70. And be it further resolved that the site plan approval is granted subject to the following conditions. The following conditions must be satisfied prior to the execution of the final site plans by the planning board chairman before any stump removal, grading, and soil disturbance occurs on a project site. Execution of the final site plan constitutes final site plan approval for the project. The project sponsor shall post a performance guarantee to ensure during construction the proper construction, maintenance, repair, and completion of the project's stormwater control measures required in the approved SWIP. The amount of this financial guarantee must be acceptable to the planning board's engineer. The form of this guarantee and the surety must be acceptable to the planning board attorney and town attorney. The financial guarantee shall be returned to the project sponsor upon issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the warehouse. Number two, the project sponsor shall post a performance guarantee to ensure the proper construction and completion of all site work, not including structures and stormwater controls required by the approved final site plans. The amount of this financial guarantee must be acceptable to the planning board engineer. The form of the guarantee and the surety must be acceptable by the planning board attorney and town attorney. The financial guarantee shall be returned to the project sponsor upon issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the warehouse. Number three, the project sponsor shall execute a stormwater management facility maintenance easement and agreement for the private stormwater controls on the project's site as required by local law number 1 of 2005. The stormwater easement shall contain the terms and conditions required by local law 1 of 2005, and substantially conform to the provisions of the town's model stormwater management facility easement and maintenance agreement as determined by the planning board attorney. The easement shall be recorded by the project sponsor at its sole expense in the office of the Orange County Clerk after approval by the planning board attorney and town attorney. Number four, the project sponsor shall pay for the town to hire a qualified professional to oversee the installation, maintenance, and inspection of the project's erosion and sediment controls required by the approved SWIP. Project sponsor shall post $45,000 into an escrow account controlled by the town to pay for the qualified professional. The project sponsor shall promptly replenish the escrow account as necessary upon the request of the planning board. Okay, under four, B, the following conditions must be satisfied prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the warehouse. Number one, the project sponsor shall provide proof to the Town of Montgomery Building Inspector that the project's site has been consolidated into one law. Number two, the project sponsor shall record an offer of dedication to the town for the wastewater treatment plant in the Orange County Clerk's office. Prior to recording the offer, it shall be reviewed and approved by the town attorney. Number three, the project sponsor shall post a maintenance guarantee to ensure after construction the continued proper performance, maintenance, and repair, if any, of the project's permanent stormwater control measures required by their approved SWIP. The maintenance guarantee shall be effective for two years after the issuance of the CO for the warehouse. The amount of this financial guarantee must be acceptable to the planning board's engineer. The amount of this guarantee and the surety must be acceptable to the planning board attorney and town attorney. See, the following conditions shall be ongoing conditions. Number one, the project sponsor shall implement and maintain all mitigation measures set forth in the planning board SEER findings. These SEER findings are attached here to incorporated herein by reference, and every mitigation measure recited hereby is made a condition of the within approvals as if recited herein. These mitigation measures include but are not limited to the following. A, the Arnott-Haber House used private domestic wells to provide water to the house. The house will be moved slightly to the north to preserve it and to make room for the project's access driveway to 747. The old walls will not be reused, and if located during construction, will be property sealed and abandoned in accordance with New York State Department of Health regulations. A new well would be provided to service the house by the applicant when the end use is agreed to by shippo. And the old wastewater disposal system will be abandoned and removed in accordance with Department, Orange County, and Department of Health guidelines and all applicable laws. A new modern septic system will be provided by the applicant when the end use is agreed to by shippo. As specifically noted in the SEER findings on page 78 regarding the Arnott-Haber House, the applicant will comply with shippo's determination in all conditions on which that agency's determination was based, including but not limited to the following: that the applicant will provide ongoing upkeep and maintenance of the building before relocation, post-relocation, and post-rehabilitation for a period of five years post-rehabilitation, or until an appropriate long-term tenant arrangement can be made. B, the treated effluent discharge from the wastewater treatment plant will meet or exceed the effluent requirements required by the Speedies permit issued by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. The wastewater treatment plant will also include UV disinfection prior to discharge. The Speedies permit limits will help preserve the water quality of the Tindbrook, a Class B stream. C, signal timing adjustments recommended to the 747, I-84 eastbound and westbound ramps, 17K, 747 Stone Castle Road, and 747 207 intersections will be made at the applicant's expense, and a signal will be installed at the intersection of 747 in the proposed main site driveway with all road widening and related improvements related thereto. In addition, the applicant has also agreed at its own expense to install modems and disconnects at four signalized intersections along 17K to allow DOT to better monitor and quickly control traffic flow along this section of 17K by remotely adjusting signal timing. D, enhanced stormwater controls as identified in the SEER findings on pages 68 and 69 will be implemented to ensure that stormwater will be managed above and beyond the control measures typically required by the town in the DEC stormwater regulations. Construction inspection and maintenance shall be carried out as identified in the SEER findings on pages 69 through 71. E, to reduce potential impacts from road salt used during the winter months. The applicant will implement the best management practices identified in the report by the Dutchess County EMC in the Cary Institute of Ecosystem Studies entitled "Road Salt: The Problem, the Solution, and How to Get There," 2010, at the site. Apply a 23% salt brine to treat areas before the onset of ice and snow storms, pre-wet salt before applying, calibrate equipment to measure exactly how much salt is being applied, use automated spreader controls which allow salt truck operators to program salt application rates so that the amount of salt being applied changes with ground speed. No salt will be stored on the project's site. Require the contractor to use modern snow plows designed to reduce the amount of road salt needed to maintain ice-free pavement. Do not structure the snow management contract based on the amount of salt applied. Even though no significant adverse noise impacts are expected from the project to be conservative and to minimize potential complaints from vehicle backup beepers, the project will equip switcher engines for all tenant trucks with smart ambient sensing multi-frequency backup alarms. G, to minimize receptor exposure to temporary construction noise during this phase, the following construction mitigation measures shall be implemented. Limit all heavy equipment operation to non-nuisance-sensitive daytime hours. As feasible, limit the number of equipment operating near one receptor at a given time. Avoid exposing any one receptor to high sound levels for an extended period of time. Play stationary equipment such as generators, compressors, and office trailers away from any receptors. Avoid having construction parking or lay-down areas near any receptors. Specific noise issues can be individually evaluated for tailored noise mitigation recommendations should traditional methods above not be sufficient. Number two, before undertaking any highway improvements or work in the right-of-ways of 17K and 747, the project sponsor shall provide the planning board with a copy of any highway work construction permits or any approval from DOT for the work. Three, to the extent that a future use is proposed for the Arnott Neighbor House after consultation with OPRHP, the project sponsor shall return to the planning board to obtain any necessary permits and approvals that may be required for such future use. Four, the project sponsor shall follow the emergency action plan for the wastewater treatment plant when necessary, as provided for in the plan. Five, as required by local law number 1, 2005, the applicant shall submit as-built plans for all approved stormwater management practices on a project site after a CO is issued for the warehouse. The plans must show the final specification for all stormwater management controls and must be certified by a professional engineer, CPSWQ or CPESC. And be it further resolved that all subsequent owners and lessees of the project and the project's site shall be required to comply with the terms and conditions of this approval resolution. And be it further resolved that the planning board directs that a complete copy of this resolution shall be filed immediately with the Town of Montgomery Town Clerk and sent to the project sponsor. Okay, on a motion of, so I'll ask for a motion to adopt this resolution which grants site plan approval. Yes, Rich?
I just have one suggested oral change. It's B2 on page 10, the timing of the offer of dedication. I'm calling to the town attorneys. They weren't able to get back to me by close business today. The resolution states prior to the issuance of the COO, I would suggest we add, if demanded by the town, the offer will be recorded sooner than that, if demanded by the town.
We haven't heard of them.
We haven't heard of them. So I'd just like to add that to B2 as in case they come back and want it for some reason before COO. And if they don't, then COO is fine. If demanded by the town, comma, this offer shall be recorded anytime between now and the issuance of the COO. That would only be if demanded by the town board.
That's the only amendment to this document?
And then the only styling on page 11, C1B, there is the use of the word wood in three places, and I think the word will may read better than the word wood. That's very likely. Will versus wood seems to be a little tighter. And that was with regard to the wastewater treatment.
And that was it? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to grant site plan and SEU permit approvals. Adopt this. Motion by Jay, seconded by Rich. All who was in favor, signify by saying aye. Everybody's aye. Thank you, everybody. Jay? Rich? Mark Marano? Another aye.
I did find that.
Oh, we got it, great. Thanks, Joe. All right, next this evening, we've got Autumn Sky Development Company, New York State Route 208 SEU permit and site plan. Request to talk about, notice it's intended to be lead agent. Any discussion board? I think we're ready to declare a lead, I think. The discussion on the 208, Autumn Sky? You want to declare a lead on Autumn Sky? On 208.
She was just asking what was. It's near Mesco.
Yeah, it's between Mesco and...
Mesco and the other...
Right side of Mesco.
Wait, sorry. Or the back, it's the one...
Yeah, I forget what it is.
The west side, the railroad.
Just across from the two houses on the slope corner there, Jay.
Joint on Mesco. Okay. Right there. You got it.
That's it, right there.
It's just south of Paul's Creek. Literally adjacent to Paul's Creek.
Yes, that's right, because we came down on there.
So I'll entertain a motion to declare a lead. By John, seconded by Rose. All who was in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I didn't say anything. The gate was talking behind you.
Oh.
Sorry, I threw my voice. I owe, I owe suka.
Okay, but we'll declare a lead and we'll put the board...
Keep in mind, it's like a sketch grading plan, sketch layout, trying to get feedback from the board and the consultants if they like what we've done, so we'll be ready to move the project forward.
Okay. 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 I think we're all set. Mike, we'll get your comment from Andrew.
Sure.
And with your declare a lead and circulate.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, thanks.
Have a good night.
You know, the heading in Mesco, what used to be a wick.
John Brown.
Right. I think what's right here on...
All right, Van Nostran, New York State Route 52, SEU permit and site plan. It was approved in November of 2017, and a site plan approvals for 18 months, a year and a half. And we extended it one six month, and it expires Wednesday. So they're asking for another six-month extension. If we get the fourth, okay? Anybody have any questions on Van Nostran? There's somebody interested in it, I guess. I don't know. Good man, we don't know.
Still missing. So...
Oh, all right. Never again.
Somebody's not interested more?
No, it's not this one. It's another one.
It's kind of...
No, no, it's not. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to ran another six-month extension for Van Nostran by Jay, seconded by John. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay.
When is the...
That will go out to May 27th of 2020. Okay, and last but not least, a motion to adjourn by Ryan, seconded by Rose. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
What are we doing on page?
Just wanted to say happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.